Valley. Now I'm being reported so. Just to give you guys an update on where what we're looking at, this is kind of the the short timeline of where we've been with this. The discussion regarding changing nightly rentals into compliance with what state code identifies as a short term rental began in two thousand and twenty. Through the years, two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one, there was ongoing research into public opinion and what best practices might be. And this included looking at a lot of different places and what they were doing to really find and identify best practices. For helping to mitigate the impact of short term rentals on a community. In October, November, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission held public hearings and meetings. And even into December, we had a meeting up in the Ogden Valley at the library. And took some comments and heard some things there as well. So. There's been some definite public outreach on this, and we feel like we're in a good place with where we've been and where we're going. And then, like I said, in December of two thousand and twenty two, the new ordinances were adopted. There was a long list of things that were addressed in the new ordinances. Some of those provisions are up on the screen. And again, the idea behind all of these was really to help mitigate the impact of short term rentals on the neighborhoods where they were allowed. That was that, and we should also keep in mind that no additional areas were changed or. There were no additional areas allowed that were not already previously allowed for nightly rentals in the transition over to short term rentals. Does that make sense? Okay. So in January, we started contract with Granicus. They go online and do this process called scraping. And they gather information through online resources like Airbnb, VRBO, and other. Online advertising groups to identify where where places are. We currently have five hundred and fifteen short term rentals that are identified in the county, including eight as of the last thirty days. This number is about eighty four point seven percent of the listings in the county, and. The this is a target that is moving and fluctuates both up and down as the identification goes through and as our addressing gets closer and better. We're constantly working, so that number is, we actually feel really good about it. But it's 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 in flux, and so that that process is on go.
Maybe maybe explain that to me. So currently, I have five hundred and fifteen short term rental units identified in the county. Eight additionally, that number represents eighty four percent of listings in the county.
Correct.
Total listings of short term rentals?
Yes. So they've gone on onto these websites, Airbnb, the RBO, those kinds of places, and they have identified five hundred and fifteen short term rental units.
Well, what? Where are the other fifteen ish percent? I mean, there's more listings than how come they're not included in five?
Yeah, are they some other kind of rental? So so how do we know that there's fifteen percent more is my question?
Those are the addresses that have yet to be either identified by the the systems or. Explored through. So what they do when they and. We have a video from Granicus is going to explain this a little bit better. But what they do is they go in and they look at a list of addresses that the county has provided them. And then they compare that with the listings that they find online. And as of this current moment. The the estimate is that there are about eighty four point seven percent of the listings that we have identified as listings. So more numbers will come on this in just a second, and the Granicus video will hopefully explain that a little better.
How do you know there are more? Where where is your knowledge of more coming?
Well, I'm going to explain that in just a second. So hopefully, by the end of this, you'll have that answered, and if not, remind me, and we'll come back to it. Okay. So. Of the listings that we found. And I've got these dates up here as a comparison from demonstrating the growth and the changes that have happened over time. In April, the numbers of letters that we had sent to people who were in violation was a hundred and two. We sent another batch of letters in May, and so that's why the number in June appears higher. Those listings that were in compliance are listed there, and then the noncompliant short term rentals are are shown as well. You can see that the number of listings that. Had letters sent and are compliant are are shown, and then some of them, and these numbers change a little bit, too. It's it's not necessarily intuitive how these numbers change. But some of the listings were just completely removed, and so their compliance status, it's not out of compliant, and it's not compliant, it's just gone. And so that's why that letter sent, but they're not compliant, has has decreased. And so this number here, where it says the status is not yet determined. This is because when Granicus finds a listing, they go in and compare that with. What the county records show as far as address is concerned and property type and use is concerned. But they also look on other resources online like Google Earth and Street View, another thing, because they really want to make sure that when they're. I have identified a particular property. It matches the listing, and it matches the address and information that the county has. So we're not just sending letters out to people. In the hopes of getting the right place. The Granicus is very accurate in making sure that, and they spend a lot of effort in the. Insurance of. Making sure that these places are real and that they are listings and that they are the listings that correspond to the addresses and that. Those addresses are in the places where we think they are. So it's exhaustive, even just saying that is exhausting. So I hope that makes sense. And I that's where the this the difference comes in between the number of of places that have been identified. And the one hundred percent identification that we're looking for. Honestly, that that's a very steep hill. And the reason why it's so steep is, like I said, they they have a very strict standard of making sure that the listing matches the property, matches the. County's information before they go after them and say, you're out of compliance. So that's the purpose of the, that's the reason for the distinction. Here's some information from Granicus, and this, I thought this was interesting to look at. You see that there are. Just these different types of information, and they they have gleaned all of this information from online listings and. Yeah, you can have a look at that. That was interesting to include. So today, here's some current numbers. Today, this county has sent one hundred and twenty one letters, including in February and in May. Of these thirty five have been for SDRs that were not in areas that allow SDRs, and twelve of those have come into compliance. Meaning that they have taken down their listings while twenty three have yet to come into compliance. The rest rest of the letters were sent to those people who live in areas where short term rentals are allowed. But were not issued a short term rental license. And they have been contacted, and twenty three of those have come into compliance while we're still working with the new ordinance sixty two.
Question. Yeah, we went about a year and a half ago. We used to get a lot of these conditional use problems, short term rentals. And we haven't seen any for us. How can twenty three be in compliance since we started doing this and we haven't done any?
Mr. Chairman, the new ordinance changed from conditional to permitted. So now we we have an exhaustive list of standards. We didn't need to put the more vague standards of conditional use on it.
So instead of coming to the planning commission, that they go straight through the planning office and mostly ours. That's a process that Iris is going to go over as soon as we're done with me. Just a final note, this is a work in progress. This is something that. County staff is working through and with Granicus to figure out the best practices and policies for Weaver County. We are unique. The the concerns and issues that we deal with in Ogden Valley are unique to the Ogden Valley. And we want to make sure that our our policies and procedures and our efforts match the unique quality of life that we love in the Ogden Valley. So stay tuned. More will come on this. We wanted to make sure you had this update. So that you knew what was going on, that the efforts that staff is taking to address these concerns. Are meeting the challenges that we are seeing. And hopefully that we're getting the results that we have hoped for when we pass the ordinance in the first place.
Quick question. Go back one slide.
Yes, sir.
Please. It says. Twelve out of thirty five, twelve have come into compliance. How do they come into compliance?
By taking down their listing.
Okay. And that's what the remainder would have to do. They just don't have SDRs in line.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a short little video here. From Granicus, and hopefully the technology will work on this.
I think the issue is that it's hard to get the sound from our audio system into Zoom. And so we're trying to use this mic here to tie into that speaker do, but when it does so, it also plays out of these speakers, and so it creates that circular loop. And so we may be able to just turn it on so we could hear it here in the room. And then put it up online or something like that later, so folks online could hear it.
That might make more sense because we can't understand any of it anyway.
We try something. I can't. I can't. Can you guys hear this out?
Here. Okay. They don't. I can just tell what I can just talk to you about what she's what the presentation is about. Trying maybe figure this out. Can we hear from Iris, maybe? Yes, there's a, I don't, I don't think so. I think it's a technical issue. It's not. It's all so. Is there a way to plug into these? We couldn't find one. Okay, so. Basically, what she shows, though, and it's it's really just a quick two minute presentation, so it's not a. A big loss anyway, and what you're looking at here is kind of the crux of what the presentation is. Iris and I have access to looking at this information comes from Granicus. And you can see on there that it's geospatially linked. Each. Short term rental is is. Based on there with a corresponding. Identifying mark. The noncompliant ones are shown there in red. That's most of what you see there, and. They're linked to particular addresses and homes that we've been made aware of as being not in compliance with the code. Some of these are in compliance with the land use regulations. There are not very many. You can see on there that it's just a few, and they're kind of obscured by. The red marks there, the red squares are the ones that are not in compliance and. So, yeah, and this this information is constantly updated. We have access to go in, we can click through on specific properties, pull up their information, pull up their listing on Airbnb and VRBO. And and cross check to make sure for ourselves that they are the properties in question, and then. We can take the steps necessary to help bring them into compliance. That's basically the crux of that presentation. It was much more technical and and showing you some of the back of house kinds of skills and and. Tools that we use to do the enforcement piece on this. So that was pretty much it for now.
Can you help us make sense out of the column on the left there?
Yes, so again, the five hundred and fifteen is the number from before. Those are the short term. Rental units that the Granicus has identified, including eight in the last thirty days. Now, the the ten ninety three is all listings, including short term and long term. And then the ten sixty six is. Total short short term rest rental listings, because sometimes there are multiple listings per unit. So you might list your short term rental on VRBO and Airbnb, and that would ship that would be two listings for the same unit.
So I guess the kind of the point is that we are. We're we have, we're using data mining to find. All the listings are geographically defined area.
Yes.
Pulling as much information off that as possible.
Yes.
Identify. How whether they're in compliance or not compliant, making steps forward, which is what you're showing me.
That's exactly right.
How have you tied in or have you tied in? To any of the rental agencies that exist in Valley, or because some of those represent units that are also listed online. Probably some special listed to them. Is there a tie in to how many? Units that are out of compliance are funneling through an agency in the valley?
So if they don't have an online presence, then Granicus is not going to find them. If you just tack something on a on a telephone.
No.
So if if they do have an online presence, whether it's just a local online service. Or it's one of these larger national or international kinds of services. They'll find you, and that's what part of the reason why that number changes is because they've done the big. Scraping with VRBO and Airbnb and the and the big ones that they're familiar with. But then they also go in and glean any kind of reference at all to a short term rental in Ogden Valley. And again, that number is so fluid, you'll we'll never get to one hundred percent. But we're pretty close and feel really good about the progress that's been made just in the last.
Of your your previous slide, I think it said three hundred and eight noncompliant units. There are tie back to how many of those are represented by an agency in the valleys like.
Three or four of them there. We could probably run that report. I haven't looked at those specific numbers and and use that particular kind of filter. But there's it's definitely linked to the source of the listing, so we could identify. Which agency was listing it? We we have that information for the bigger ones. I know for a fact. I haven't looked specifically for Ogden Valley Rental Listings dot com, for example, but if there was such a thing. We would find that information. We could run a report just listing that.
Taking that a little farther, I guess the question, I maybe even rephrase it. Is is there a a major offender, you know, that you found, like, you know, say Joe's rental shop that has two hundred of those?
I don't think so. I you found some? Okay, so we'll let Iris address that.
Okay. And. I don't know that you addressed our eighty five percent. Of five fifteen is representing eighty five percent.
So, yeah, that's and and let's say. Yeah, let me let me introduce Iris, who is going to talk to some of that as well, and hopefully answer that question better than I could. Any other questions for me before I let Iris take over?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as we wait for the next presentation, part of that eighty five percent is level of confidence in the data. When they have multiple listings, they got multiple pictures that what those these little. Internet spiders are doing is they're going, they're finding them, they're comparing them to find and isolate them to individualized units, so we can go after them, find an address and go after each one of those. The eighty five percent confidence and suggests that out of the numbers that we have, we think we found eighty five percent of them. There's still a margin of error on some of those that are out there.
If I understand what you're telling me, that eighty five percent is some level of confidence that that's eighty, that five hundred and fifteen is eighty five percent of the total.
Yes.
But we don't, we don't have a level of confidence. What is that? Is it ninety percent?
No, it's as far as five hundred and fifteen goes. Five hundred and fifteen are.
So five hundred and fifteen, we're what level of confidence that that's eighty five percent?
I mean, I'd like to say a hundred percent, but high nineties. But that that's the number, because that those are the numbers that they've isolated to one single address.
And and that five hundred and fifteen, we can say with a hundred percent. Confidence that those are identified short term rental properties in the valley. Well, in the county, there's a few that have spilled over in that area.
Maybe put this another way, we anticipate there's about fifteen percent more than we haven't found. Is that right?
No.
Okay, so.
Iris, why don't you come on up?
Okay. All right. Um, first of all, good evening, Commissions. Good evening, Council. And good evening, Charlie, as you are representative and members of the public that have come out. Thank you. So part of the eighty four, eighty five percent is some of that is. The information that they've got from the assessors' office and from the clerk auditor's office. And from surveyor's office. Now, some of the eighty five percent or eighty four percent that we are. Confident in is. Properties that have not been developed yet. So there is some of that. That's why we are saying it. We have identified eighty four to eighty five percent. Because some of that fifteen percent have not been developed. But they have been identified as areas where short term rentals could be built and could be operating in the future. So that's why you've got some of that blocks, and it's the these numbers are fluid. They're never going to be a hundred percent because of. Different variables. Does that help a little more?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I want to make sure I understand, because fifteen percent of five hundred and fifteen is.
Let me try. Yeah, let me try and represent this just a little differently. If you take all the data. That these crawlers can find on the internet and you dump it into a bucket. As you start to sort through that stuff, you're going to find common threads, common pieces of data, say, okay, this data goes to that short term rental, this data goes to that short term rental. There's still about fifteen percent of that data still there. We think we've gone through eighty five percent of the data to tie them to actual addresses. There's still about fifteen percent of the data that's out there, and Granicus, when we did our bidding process, they were the ones who. Rose to the top in terms of in terms of cost, but they were also the ones who rose to the top in terms of level of confidence of of mining that data. But they are even said that they're probably not going to get better than ninety percent, ninety to ninety five percent. Sorting through that data, either with their their own problems. That makes sense. So still going to be a little bit of data out there that's questionable that their. Machines and their scripts or whatever it is that finds them can't identify or determine what it goes to.
Okay, so we got different methods of finding SDRs. One is Granicus scraping the internet. Another seems to be somebody looking in the county records, land records to see. What units are built or could be built. Where SDRs are allowed.
And and that's what, excuse me. And that's what Granicus does as well. They. Can't take all that data together. They give us a list, and that through that list, then. I go through every single one of those lists, and then we we start. Finding out which are the ones that are allowed to do SSTRs, but they don't have a license. And so that's when the letters went out and in February and then again in June. And so it's an ongoing thing. It's like when you bake a cake, you have to keep. And you have to keep turning the batter to put enough air into it, so the cake will rise, and that's what we're doing. So the ones that rise to the top, the legal SDRs, and we try and really focus on them, but. Another part of our focus is when you're allowed to do SDRs and you're operating without. A license, and we focus on those people as well. And so my presentation was to show you in a lot of the. Before we had the new ordinance that went through, we had an area that had to have conditional uses. And that's when they would come before you under the conditional use provision. So now we've taken that away, and they have become as permitted. But through the process of of the ordinance that has been so cleverly written. We can weed out and make sure that those that do and are operating. As a short term rental know exactly what they can and cannot do, and so that's kind of what my presentation is.
Okay, there may be another class of SDRs out there.
No, we're not. We're making one class of SDRs.
A class that is SDRs that are rented by word of mouth, they're never put on the internet. And the only way you'd know about those is from.
Right, and it's where I get public support, and I will tell you, the members of the public out in in the valley are wonderful. If they know of something that is not legal, an SDR that's going on that is not legal, they let me know, and we go after them.
Okay.
And so. For ninety five percent. Of what is going on in the valley, Granicus does for us, but the other five percent, we have a very loyal and very wonderful public. That will call in and say, I don't know if you know, but this is going on. And then we check our records and we check it with Granicus as well. And if they're not on the list, then we proceed as we would proceed with the new ordinance.
Okay, and there's that number that's identified by the public included in the five hundred and.
No, it is not that. This is just for what Granicus does. And the numbers that we have that are just by word and mouth, right now in the books, I've got forty eight.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. So my presentation. So part of what I do is I go, everybody that applies for a short term rental, I go through everything. I go and and through the ordinance that has been written, and what I did was I compiled. A cheat sheet, if you like, and it's got what we need for them to get an SDR license. And so what I, when they apply, I send the ordinance. And I make it very clear that they have to read it because they have to sign and say that they've read it and understood it. And the second is I get. And the second is I give them a sheet that, so they can go through it. And know, this is what they need to do. And if they don't have everything on that sheet. Then they will not be getting a, um, STR license. At the moment, in my system, I have sixty-three people that are waiting. To get an STR license, but they're missing some information that I need. And so, excuse me, I've had pneumonia and so it's difficult sometimes to catch my breath. So anyway. So this is the ordinance and this is what I go through. So, before you decide to rent out your house, there are a couple of things you need and we all know that. And then, um, uh, it's very important for me is the land, land use law and zoning. And, um, for, for the local level. And, um, with that, uh, short-term rentals means different things to different people. And so we need everybody to come together with a consensus and know exactly how we will be issuing. And what requirements there are. So, the first thing, and I've said that, and I make sure that they sign. That they have read our ordinance and they do understand it. And that also includes if they have an agent. That's helping them looking after their property. So, I tell them, make a checklist. Look at my list, my checklist that I've given you and make sure you have everything that I'm requiring. And, and then, um, I want to know if there are any changes with the home. Have they, um, done some interior, um, changes? Have they changed the garage into a sleeping room without getting permits and stuff? We look. If, um, somebody tells me they can have twenty-two people in their home, I'm going to be looking for, for, um. Inspection permits to see if they have, um. Gotten permits. I'm going to be looking to see i- if they are in, under, under the septic rule. If they have septic systems, how many people they can actually have in their home. So. Just a couple of things that I'm looking for. We do require proof of occupancy. So if you want to do, uh, a short-term rental. That is required. Um, I require a site plan, a parking plan. Do they have a driveway? Do, you know, are, do they have a garage? Trash disposal is very important because, you know, if people are putting trash to the side. And, um, they don't have anybody to collect it. Or they're dumping and they've got three or four bags beside the trash can. I want to know about it. That's a violation. You're not doing that. And do you have an existing fence? I need to know a de- detailed floor plan. Because if I need to send the, uh, emergency guys in, the firefighters or the police officers. In because there's an emergency situation, I need to know that they can click on this. And they can look to see where the bedrooms are, where the kitchen is, where, where, where the dining room is. What's what and what's where on the home. I need a will serve letter and that's really important and it's been a sticking point. And I, I will tell you that the water companies up in the valley have been wonderful. And I require that each and every unit that wants an STR license. Gets an okay from the company that they get their water from. So. And I want to make sure that there's no modifications made of the house and. Make sure that everything is in compliance, especially if it's a single-family dwelling. I want to make sure that nobody's going to do an STR in the pole barn. Or, you know, in the loafing shed or something. Um, if, if there's a lighting plan, uh, everybody is required to have a lighting plan in the valley. I want to make sure that that's in compliance. And I want to know the name and the information and phone number of the contact person. And they need to be at that property within an hour. If they cannot, they cannot get a license. Um, I need to know who the short, which short-term. Um, rental companies that they're listing with, VRBO, um, Airbnb, if it's, um. Some of the local companies, I need to know that. Um, if there's a homeowners association. Do the homeowners, is the homeowners association allowing? Uh, short-term rentals, if they're allowing short-term rentals, do they have a number? Do they have a cap? And I'm going to be looking at that too. Um, there needs to be an application. And they pay those fees online. We also need an entity number, so the taxes are being taken. Now, if the RBO, Airbnb, or one of the local companies are doing the taxes, I need their tax, their entity number. Just to make sure that taxes are going where they need to be going, needs to be going in our coffers. And for, for the county. Uh, complete application is required. If your application is not, is not complete, we will not move forward. We will not process. We will stop and we will email you and tell you, you need A, B, and C. And we won't move forward till we have that. So, operating standards. So, um, you, they have to post internally. Um, the short-term rental license number. They have to have all the twenty-four hour emergency numbers. They have to know how to get in and out of the house if there was an emergency. They have to know whether the, um. Fire extinguishers are. They have to know what the current fire restrictions are. So if they want to go roast marshmallows on the patio. And, um, we're in the middle of a severe drought and we're in the middle of, of severe fire restrictions. They need to know that they can't do that. Their dogs need to be on leashes. Um, so. We need to have all that information on there. Not only that, but when they, um. Advertise, whether it's a local agency or whether it's a national agency or an international agency. They need either a picture copy of their license or their license number. So we can, uh, make sure that they do have a license. Um, street addressing, each licensed short-term rental property has to have a street address. We don't do the P O boxes. So advertising requirements pretty much are going through those. Um, and they have to make sure that they post how many people they can have on, on their posting. I'm going through, um, some people that are wanting to get their licenses. And, um, they've been doing it without a license and they've been allowing sixteen, eighteen, twenty-two people. Uh, up to twenty-two people in their home. Well, are, we have occupancy limits now with the new. Uh, uh, um, with the new ordinance, our occupancy limits are two per bedroom. Plus four with a total of ten. Now, if you have, and you want more than ten, we have to make sure there's some sort of fire. Fire protection in the home, like a sprinkler system. We, we have to make sure you have that extra parking. We have to make sure that, um, the, the water company is good with it. We have to make sure that, um, as, uh, that the homeowners association, if there is a homeowners association. Is good with those extra amount of people. So it's just not a given just because you have a ten-bedroom house. That you're going to be able to get twenty-four people in that home. So parking is a big thing for us too. We don't want you parking on the streets, blocking the neighbors. We don't want you parking in the neighbor's area. If you live in a condominium and you have assigned parking, we don't want them, um, your guests to take over other people's parkings. We want to know exactly how much parking you have. The other thing is noise. And a lot of people, you know, when you're on vacation, you're not cognizant. Of your neighbors too much. You want to have a good time. Sometimes they want to watch movies outside because. You know, roast marshmallows outside or whatever. But after. Um, ten PM and eight PM, no sounds can be exceeding the fifty decibel limit. And we do enforce that. Um, so the nature of use, so you cannot have a commercial use. I, I, as, uh, a rental unit. So, um. I do have a property that advertises and it's not a legal property. And they are, add, advertise them illegally because they have, um, companies come. And they do things as a company. That's a commercial. That's a commercial enterprise. That's not allowed. And we are going after them, um, quite vigorously. You can't have weddings, retreats, or similar commercial ventures like that. It's just people that want to recreate in our area that want to, to have a nice home to be able to do that. It's not, it's not for anybody that's having food catered or, um. Uh, or, 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 you know, big retreats or whatever. So, um, signage, onsite signage intended to advertise the property as a. Short-term rental is not permitted anywhere. And their animals, whether it's a dog, I saw a lady with a skunk the other day. Um, whether it's a dog, a skunk, a cat, or a hamster, has to be on a leash. Can't be, can't not have an animal without being supervised on a leash. Um, so if you want to, if the neighborhood, neighbors want to file a complaint. There are minimum standards for that. When you make an initial complaint, whether you do it through the. The hotline, Granicus has a hotline. Every morning I get on that hotline and I see who's called. And then I, I'll put a comment there. If we're already dealing with it, we're already dealing with, if it's a new, um. Uh, uh, violation, I'll call that person and talk to them and ask them what's going on and what they've observed. Because that helps me. So that's, um, and then. We notify the responsible agent, if they have an agent, if they don't, there is, they're, um, notified. What I do is I notify the responsible agent and I notify the property owner. So I'm double. Ensuring myself that they can't say, well, I never got notified. I didn't know what was going on. He didn't give me the letter. She didn't give me the letter. I notify both. And I also follow up with the post office to make sure that that's been delivered. And. To, so we attempt to resolve a complaint. And, and I'm talking about complaints that are with the. The rental units that are allowed, not the legal units. So we try and resolve it. And if, if it's a, 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 a dangerous situation or if it's. You know, we, we will call the law, law enforcement. We will continue to investigate whatever the, um. Whatever the complaint is, just because. Um, say we had a police officer go because the noise was so bad and it's two o'clock in the morning. And, and the police officer make sure that there's no more noise. We'll continue the next day. With that complaint till it's resolved until, and so it doesn't happen again. So for most violations, it's going to be a minor violation. And the owners are given one warn, warning for their first minor violation. And, and that's within a twelve-month calendar month. Um, and then if they offend again, after three minor violations, it becomes a major violation. And each time they're fined for it after. And so they can be fined up, if it's a minor violation, up to fifty percent of the nightly rental. Or what the state allows. If it's a major violation on the first violation. It, it can be a hundred percent and then it can go up from there. Okay, so, unlicensed violations. Um, we're committed as a county to stamp out, um, as much. Of the unlicensed violations as we can. Sometimes it's a very painful process because we have to go through the required letters. We have to go through the filing process. We have to, and in some cases, we have to go through the judicial. Um, system. And any of those can take a little time for that. And, um. We always ask for an administrative penalty if it's an unlicensed violation. I have some violations right now that are in the thousands of dollars that they owe the county because they're continuing. And so we're wanting to go through the judicial process with those properties and we will. So any person that's found in violation of any provisions of the chap, of chapter. One oh eight eleven is liable for an administrative penalty in the form of a monetary fine based on the average. Monthly night. And I think I pretty much told you that. And then. The amounts are, uh, minor violations fifty percent, major a hundred percent, unlicensed violations of two hundred percent. So if you have, if you're in an area and say you're in a AB three zone and you decide to. To put your home up for, uh, an STR, a short-term rental, and we find you. We will fine you two hundred percent of what you have listed your unit for. So if you go along and say, um, you're in the eighty-three zone, you decide to rent, even though you know it's illegal. So you don't have permits or anything. You put your list there online. And we catch you and you've listed it for a thousand dollars a night, we will fine you two thousand dollars a night. And till either you stop or we end up in court with you. And then the judge will take care of you. So, revocations due to minor violations. So if you have a short-term rental unit and it's your fourth minor violation within three consecutive months. Or six minor violations within twelve months. Then, um, we will go either into the major. Or, uh, and then we'll go into the judicial and, but we'll take your license away. And we'll take your license away for, um, a period of time, either six or twelve months. Depending on what your violations are and, and how consistently you're violating. Oh, and I think that's it. Um. Sorry, it's a lot to take in, but the, the, um, STR license, uh, STR ordinance is very. Very well-packed. And, um, I think most, if not all of. Our, um, situations that we can up with is addressed by the, by that. So. It's, it's a very well-done ordinance. So if you, do you gentlemen have any questions for me?
Does that, um, complaint line get used and how many individual? Addresses have been complained about?
Um, we've had a total of fifteen, four of them have not been in our jurisdiction. I've had three in Davis County, one in Ogden City. So. About eleven. Of that, um, I've had one person do it twice, three times. And, um, mostly they're different individuals.
Has Granicus told you how this area compares to their typical client base and other resort communities with respect to? The number or the rate of illegal usage?
Um, we're not as bad as some areas. They, they have a few areas that are really bad. They have no participation with their, oh, very little participation with their government. And, and no participation from the community. So, so we're, we're very, um. How do I say it last? No, um, we're very fortunate. In our community that we have such an active public that are willing to help us with this problem.
It looks like two sets of letters.
Um, two sets of letters have gone out from the Granicus, uh, but other letters have gone out from other things. When people have called me and they're not on the, um, on the, um. Online system, it's word of mouth. So we've had more than that.
Well, Granicus issue letters as it.
No, I, I tell them when, when to issue the letters. So we wait the thirty days and then I say issue. And, um, but then the, like, the sixty-three people that are still waiting in limbo. Till we get everything. I also have them send a letter for those six. I also have them send a letter for those sixty three people as well, saying, you know, you're still not in compliance. Even though you've started the process. You know, and especially if they've rented in that time. Some of them suspend it and they won't rent during the time. And but if they have rented during that time, then, then there. Then I contact them and say, hey, you know what? You're, you're very close to not being able to get. An S T R because you're still renting. You need to see some assistance until you actually get the license. Because what you're doing is illegal at this point.
There ever any notification or action towards? The advertising company V R B O when you have a blatantly illegal.
And I, I've contacted V R B O Airbnb, couple of other big ones. And and um, they basically just laugh at us. They say it's a business. So they will continue.
Funding Commissioner, uh, state law prohibits us from taking actions specifically.
Against.
If it, if it is specifically for listing, um, it's freedom of speech question. So they're basically saying just because we're providing the platform doesn't mean that we're trying to enable people to be illegal if they're illegal in its, that's their choice.
Yeah. And I will tell you that the conversation I had with Airbnb was prior to two thousand seventeen before that when in.
They announced recently that they were going to work closer with local regulators, like Airbnb, and I saw something about.
So it's like every legislative session for the last ten years, something about S T Rs has come up. Um, the state is working with uh, these bigger companies when it comes to taxation. So now the platform is remitting tax uh, to the state as opposed to um. Requiring every individual to volunteer to remit their own taxes. So that's how they're working together right now.
Before twenty seventeen, none of the big companies, Airbnb, V R B O, were sending in taxes to the local entities. None of them. And um, then when the legislature entered. Then that's when they came into compliance. But the individual property owner has a, a say. Either they can remit their own taxes or. They can, or the big companies can, but of every single application, we do require an entity number. Just to make sure the taxes are where they should go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe we, um, we noticed for, let me take public comment on this. So. Um, if the public has comments on this, please come forward. Keep your uh, comments to about two, two minutes. Group, pre say so. Welcome, come on up, say your name and where you're from.
Oh, you know who I am. Okay, I'm Jan Fulmer. I live in Eden and I hope everyone can hear this sufficiently. I'm very pleased to see that we have Fox News attending via Zoom. I think that we finally may be getting some. Publicity about the issues we have in Ogden Valley. And I think if you looked at the red dots on that map. By far, the majority of the short term rentals are in fact in Ogden Valley. I would like to say a special thank you to Iris. Granicus dramatically scrapes websites and they identify. Iris has the job of enforcement, which I don't think a lot of people would volunteer for. So Iris, thank you very much. And I know the S T R team in the valley. Has sent you information. We've sent you whatever data we've been able to collect. So we hope you have found that to be helpful. All right. Um, the other thing is, I would like to note that um. The one concentrated area of S T Rs is Moose Hollow, the Cascades and Wolf Lodge. They are all types of condos that have been allowed to do S T Rs. And it's very interesting because once the management companies there got wind that we, the county was now enforcing it. They sent notices out to all the owners of the unit saying, oh, by the way, if you're going to do short term rentals. You either need a conditional use permit or a license. So they are telling their owners that this is what is required. The third thing is, and I have, I would like to give this to you. It was an article that was published recently in the Standard Examiner. What's interesting about this article is it was written by a realtor. And this realtor gives ten adverse effects. Of short term rentals in neighborhoods, communities and towns. Those ten adverse effects we have reported to Bill Kobe through actual situations that have occurred in Moab. Aspen, Springdale. Whitefish, Montana, Bozeman, Montana. And there was another one. It's real. It's really happening and short term rentals do devastate communities. On a final note, I would like to ask a question if I may. I guess Charlie. This probably has to be directed to you. But on April nineteenth, twenty twenty one, there was a Weber County Commissioner's Work Session. And at that work session, Commissioner Freyer indicated that there was misinformation. Indicating that the commissioners wanted to expand short term rentals. Commissioner Freyer was very adamant in that the whole purpose of a short term rental ordinance. Was for enforcement and not to expand short term rentals. He did not say. Not expanding short term rentals in the current zones. It was just not expanding short term rentals. So can you please help me understand if Weber County Planning is continuing? To consider allowing short term rentals when new developers submit their plans. And say, we want this to be for short term rentals. And Charlie, that's the question I have for you. And if I can, please, I'd like to give you this article.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
So um, answer the question is I don't know if the uh, commission is going to consider expanding it into different areas. Uh, but I do know that the commission. The intention was to make sure that we're not uh, including short term rentals. Into new zones or into, sorry, the existing zones that they're not allowed in. So when they say we're not expanding it into. These zones, the A B three zone, the R E fifteen zone, the R um, the twenty zone. Those are the kinds of zones they're saying they're not expanding this use into. The zones that they were already allowed in, that doesn't change. For example, and I did mention, I think what Jan's referring to, I did mention in our last meeting. That form based zone does allow short term rentals in some locations, not in the large. Uh, or the bigger lot subdivisions, not the residential subdivision, but in the um, commercial areas, it does allow that. Um, and the county commission is potentially considering um, uh, applying the form based zone to those village areas. So will more come? Um, I don't know. It really comes down to the questions that are being asked uh, from landowners and developers. Um, but as a principle, I know that the county commissioners are saying where those existing developments are. Already governed by whatever zone is there. They're not going outside of. Uh, the allowances of the zones at this time.
So put another way, if, if short term rentals. Or certain rental zones were to be increased, it would be done through the process, which includes a public hearing.
That's correct.
It would be something that the public could voice their opinion on. So. It's not something they're trying to, that they're adamant and chasing to an increase, but if it comes before as a. You know, potential rezone into an area that has. Short term rentals possibility and that's being looked at just like everything else.
That's right. And someone would have to apply to change the zone in order to do that. Like you mentioned, we will require hearings and a full process.
Should be, you know, a public hearing before the planning commission and.
County Commission.
So if you want to, to prevent that from happening, would be to voice your opinion at those hearings.
Really, do I recall it? This commission, there was um, discussion and action to take another housing types. Off the matrix and.
Yes, actually two of the housing types. Yeah.
Could you clarify which?
So um, prior to this last um, ordinance update in the form base, which happened uh, two, three weeks ago. Um, in a form based zone, short term rentals was allowed on small lot residential properties, which small residential. Very small lots, they're three thousand square foot lots that could potentially have up to four residences on there. So kind of looking at townhomes in those areas. Um, it was allowed there and it was also allowed in multifamily residential. Again, where those areas are designated on that street regulating plan. At the request of the planning commission, the county commission uh, eliminated, eliminated this use from those two. Um, residential areas. So now in the four base area, it's only allowed in the um. Thanks, thank you. Mixed use commercial zone, the um, uh, vehicle oriented commercial zone and the government institutional um, area. And again, anybody would have to change their zone in order to get that, I guess, Nordic has theirs.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name. Where are you from?
Douglas Dixon is my name. I'm from Liberty, Utah, thirty nine thirty north, thirty five hundred east liberty. And I want to restate what I've already stated in multiple meetings. That I'm interested in making sure that I preserve my property usage rights, property usage rights. I've lived in the valley and I have watched the valley be taken over by people who come in. From other places and want to recreate. In my backyard, what they left. And I'm saying, no. If you liked what you liked, or you came to our valley and says, oh, this is gorgeous. This is beautiful. And I have watched developers come in and look at this and say, this is a gold mine. These people don't even know what they have. I lived through the day when they said, let's limit the growth of the valley so that. The people in the valley will be happy. Three acre zone. I told my friends, no, no, no. People can't even take care of a half an acre. All there'll be is a three, two and a half acre wheat patch. Oh, no. They stole from my community neighbors sixty six percent of the value. Of their development rights. I'm saying. That I feel like I'm in nineteen forty in Nazi Germany. I don't like it. I don't want it. I, I feel like. This has the atmosphere of the congressional hearings. It's all about money. It's all about taxes. It's not about people. I am going to be in violation. As per. On the Fourth of July, when I have my own family come and stay overnight. There's more than ten people. I, I, it's, this is insane. I appreciate so much. The planners working with me and continue to work with me and the commissioner, I, I will be as vigilant. From an insider standpoint, as those coming into the valley are as vigilant. To make sure that people like me get squashed down and made an example of. I'm not going to put up with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I like it. That was good. Um, I own a property in Eden as well. Um, I come from a family of seven kids. I'm one of seven. I have four kids.
I didn't catch your name.
Mike on Eden Hills Drive.
Mike.
All rich. And uh, I wanted to buy a big property. We like to boat. I have everybody come up. We bring our boats. We have a good time. We boat together. What's going on here is the same thing. We've got these commissions that are set up to harass us. Here I show up to my property. It's Thanksgiving. I've got a nephew with epilepsy. These groups are set out to come spy on us, do whatever. We've got a lot of people. There's probably thirty of us. Right? It's a huge house. No problems, right? Here, these groups set up to come target Airbnb people or people over ten groups. I get a notice on the car of the kid that's handicapped that says, you're not welcomed here. This is illegal. Your neighbors. And I thought. What is the audacity of these people that think they're going to go out and target everybody? Here this sweet mom, my sister. Gets this nasty note on her car from these groups. They're sneaking around, trying to take pictures. On multiple occasion, have people that drive by and flip us off and they stop and take pictures. I'm like, listen, my kids are out in the front yard. They're playing. Their windows are open. We've got bathrooms on the front of our house. And these secret little groups that are trying to identify people that are violating. Are taking pictures. I've called the police on several occasions. To stop these people. I get these nasty notes all the time. But guess what? When I'm not there. I like to rent out the property. And. To me. She talked about real estate agent. Oh, this agent, short term rentals are ruining these communities. I am a licensed real estate agent local here. Airbnbs only increase the value of a property. They only benefit the community. They don't destroy it. They don't cause any problems. Housing discrimination under the Fair Housing Act. Okay, the violations I see are all about telling me how I can use my property that I purchased, not in an H O A. If I want to go use it with my family and have thirty people there, that's my right. I bought the property. And you know what? They, they talked about money. It is all about money. I bought the property. It was twenty eight hundred dollars in property taxes. Within the year, they said, oh, you don't live there. We're going to increase your property taxes from twenty eight hundred to over seventy three hundred dollars. Do I go to school there? My kids go to school there? No, they don't go to school there. Do we have curb and gutter? No, we don't have curb and gutter. Do we get sewer? No, we don't get sewer. We don't get any benefits, but here they tripled my property taxes. That's fine. I paid it. Okay, then I rent my property because guess what? The property taxes are expensive. They keep raising all these things. I paid fifteen hundred dollars in taxes. For my short term rental on top of the seventy three hundred dollars I paid in property taxes. It's good for the government. It's good for everybody. They're getting all these funds. I'm supporting the companies, the businesses around. And I think it's ridiculous that you're going to tell me in a non-H O A property with over a half an acre. That I can't, I need to limit the amount of people on my property. I need to not rent it out. I can't have some income coming in to support it. And that's my stance.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Portman. Uh, I live in Huntsville. Um, and I'm just going to read a thing because I'm nervous. So, um, so. My husband and I are current full time valley residents. My husband grew up in the valley and has deep family roots that go back for generations. We are small business owners and very active in the local economy. We consider ourselves very lucky to own, live in and have been renovating a home with an adorable. Detached guest house that we truly have enjoyed renting to travelers. We were apprehensive at first to open up our home and, and property to strangers. But after many, many stays, we were happy to report we quite literally have never had a bad experience. And have been very pleasantly surprised by the amount of respect, friendliness and appreciation we've received from all of our guests. When we started running our property, we were unaware that it was illegal. We have informed all of our neighbors that what we were doing and we have never had any complaints whatsoever. From anybody in the neighborhood. They were all surprised by how quiet and polite our guests have been. And the ability to use our own home as an S T R has truly changed our lives for the better and relieved us from a lot of financial burden. As well as motivated us to make many big improvements to our property and to our home, which has had a, had a positive impact on the community at large. We are not the only, only owner occupant hosts that have had amazingly positive experiences with Airbnb. And we were shocked to hear the myriad of complaints from the community, but not surprised to hear that the bulk of these complaints are stemming from. Absentee homeowners that run out their second or third vacation home with little to no oversight or direct guest interaction during their stays. I believe that they are the problem. The members of the community who live here full time. Who have chosen to run out a portion of their own homes are not the ones accumulating complaints and disrupting the neighborhood. As they are in fact within the same demographic of folks who are motivated to reserve and protect our beautiful community. There has to be a solution to mitigate the complaints coming from these absentee hosts. While still allowing us full time owner occupied valley residents that. that host with respect and responsibility to continue to rent out their own properties. The Ogden Valley is growing. There is no stopping that. We are in a resort haven and rapidly growing tourism is inevitable. I think anybody that lives in the valley will agree, we do not want to see more and more land developed, more multi-story condos or more hotels being built. By Airbnb being our homes, we are filling a need without having to alter the landscape or the rural integrity of the valley. We are providing the opportunity for people to experience the beauty of this place that we love so much through the homes of its actual community members. By doing this, we are sharing the culture, mentality, and lifestyle with those that travel through rather than creating a division between locals and tourists. This will hopefully instill a greater sense of connectedness and responsibility to respect our landscape and community and those traveling through. Um, so we're not in a area that is zoned for SDRs. We want to do everything to come into compliance, gain licensing, pay taxes, whatever it takes. We've poured our heart, soul, time, money into this endeavor. It's something we're passionate about and it would be devastating financially and emotionally to not get to do it anymore.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robin Jones. I live in Ogden Canyon. I have a comment and I have a question. Uh, the comment that I have, um, when Commissioner Burton uh made a a comment about word of mouth, I think that's a a very valid and probably more uh widespread than we know. But my question is, um, could one of the contributing factors to add to this problem are realtors that market homes? And and say they're available for or that they're zoned for short-term rentals when they know darn good and well they're not. We've had this happen in our neighborhood. I think it's contributing to the problem. Maybe there needs to be some uh discussions with the Board of Realtors. Uh, this is a, this is an ongoing problem. Um, my other uh comment, well, I guess another question is, and I've worked with very closely with Iris and I appreciate everything she's done. Uh, but we had a a situation that was very deflating because we spent the better part of two and a half years documenting uh illegal activity in our neighborhood because they wouldn't, uh before Granicus came on board, uh they wouldn't go on the BRBO and the Airbnb. And it it was uh left up to the public to help document and and pinpoint the problems. And so um, my question is, once fines, well, let me go back just a minute. Uh, when they first started doing discussions on the short-term rentals and what could be deter, you know, things they could do to deter the behavior of the bad actors. Um, one of the comments from the commissioners was, let's hit them in the pocketbook. And that made sense to me. But uh an individual in our neighborhood amassed a seventeen thousand dollar fine. It was never collected. As a matter of fact, it was forgiven by the Weber County attorneys. Never could get an answer to that other than the individual came in and documented that everybody that had stayed in that house for two and a half years was family or friends. So I want to make sure that this isn't happening. And hopefully with Granicus, I mean, everything, you know, is is maybe taking a different course, but that was very discouraging. Uh, the individual happened to be on the uh Ogden City Planning Commission. So you know, there are some underhanded things going on, but my final question is, how is the money going to be collected? I mean, it's one thing to say, oh, we're going to charge you a hundred percent, two hundred, whatever. How are they going to collect?
Thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. Um, Mike Erickson, living in Eden Creek Drive area, lived there for fifteen years. My wife is a long-term valley resident. Her family, the Fullers, have been there for quite a long time. Um, thank you for your time tonight. I just have a couple of questions. One, mainly regarding the numbers that I saw tonight. So what I believe I saw was three hundred and eight um illegal non-compliant STRs mostly in the valley. I saw a hundred and two letters sent. Is that correct? About that, a hundred, round a hundred letters sent to those, which means there's two hundred people that still haven't got letters. And though those a hundred letters, I saw thirty-two that have become compliant. So out of three hundred and eight non-compliant STRs over a couple of years of work, seems like we've only got thirty-two that have become compliant. And the rest of them, from what I understand, probably just keep posting their postings and keep doing what they're doing, collecting their money without, sounds like going through this process of actually paying. And that's even if they're posting it on Airbnb or not, they still could be using word of mouth. So if we're going to come up with any type of solution around this, my question is, what are we going to do to enforce this? Is this something that we're capable of? Number one, can we enforce this if we do create rules? Because we, it sounds like we've got a really detailed plan. But if we can't enforce it, what does it matter? There's a person that's close to me that doesn't, that just created a shed and now has been renting it out as a shed, no building permit. It's barely even two hundred square feet, has not been inspected, nothing like that. I mean, what's to stop people from bringing in tiny houses on trailers? There ain't a lot of stuff that they can do. If we can't enforce it, that's a big deal, right? Um, the other question is, um, when people, we're talking about expanding the short-term thing. So if they're not in in a place and zoned for it and they want to expand, what's to keep them from just repurposing their business model from a short-term rental to say, like, oh, now I'm a clamping site. I'm going to file for a permit to to be a clamping site. And then that'll be my way of getting around the STRs. Like, that's going to probably happen too. Um, and so if there's any way that we can tie these individuals to people applying for new permits to do things like that, I mean, maybe there's some correlation there. Maybe that's going to be helpful for the planning commission, et cetera. Um, but I want to thank you for your time and the people that have expressed their opinions here tonight. Like, that's, I'm sure. There's good, good situations and there's bad situations, but for those of us that choose a place to live, knowing who our neighbors are is integral to our anxiety levels and our comfort. I cannot feel comfortable in my home if I don't know who's staying next. I didn't live in a hotel. I didn't live in a condominium for a purpose. I lived in a community so that I knew the people around me and I could talk to them. I just don't know with these short-term rentals, my neighbors, I don't know who they are. And that causes anxiety to me as a homeowner. It's not, it's part of the reason why I decided to build where I build. And to have that change on me does affect my life and those around me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, good evening. My name is Gary Foma. I have a couple of comments here. Um, I think one we have to think about here is, I've heard comments about people coming in from outside, bringing what they want from outside into the valley. I'd like to say maybe not. Maybe the people are coming in the valley, and I've lived here now sixteen years, have seen what's happened. And we don't want that to happen in the valley. So I think there's two ways to look at this question. Do we take just an internal view, or do we look at some of the other communities that are facing the same problem? You have a handout. I was in Moab last week. Nobody from Moab, who was originally Moab, lives there anymore. There are no Moabites left. That's not what we want here. Certainly don't want to drive out all the Ogden Valley long-term residents. Absolutely. But we do come with, as an outsider, other views that might be adaptable into the valley. The other comment I'd like to say is people who come into the valley, buy a property, and then say, oh, I can't rent it out and I can't pay my mortgage. Well, didn't you look at the zoning first? Or did you think the zoning was a joke? People who expand their homes without building permits. Is that a joke? You don't care? I'm sorry. If you can't pay your mortgage, that's not my problem. You should have done your homework before you got here. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Looks like we've got Gregory Friedman online.
Am I allowed to say something else?
What? I believe it's Gregory Friedman's turn.
That's me. I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gregory. Sorry.
Now, feel free to call me Greg and thank you. I'm a homeowner in Trappers Ridge in Eden. And I am heartened to hear some of the diversity of opinion because I felt like through the process last year, it had sorely been lacking. I actually had just a quick question and clarification that I wanted to ask of Iris. There were several um uh uh requirements that you listed in terms of things that are needed for uh a license, but which were not specified specifically. They're touched on, but not specifically within the uh code itself. The one that really raised my eyebrows was the requirement of a fire suppression system. Uh, there is a mention of adequate uh or appropriate fire safety measures as approved by the um, as approved by the fire marshal, but there certainly was not within the document itself any requirement that houses over ten people have an actual sprinkler system. So really what I, among my thousands of questions, but primarily are, I I wanted to know, is the county, as this is a work in progress, are the commissioners continuing to evaluate not only the licenser requirements to make sure that there is not any sort of overreach, or is it being left to um uh sort of the enforcement arms to to make those final calls? Uh, and any insight you can offer there uh would be very much appreciated, along with other clarifications on things that had been mentioned to me last uh last winter, would probably be readdressed, those being occupancy requirements and and some other needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We, he, well, it sounds like he has some specific questions. Please feel free to reach out to Iris or the planning staff after the meeting.
Um, all right. Hi, Steve Emery, Colonel retired, Eden. Uh, been there for about twenty-five years. Uh, gentleman came up and talked about enforcement, and I think he had the nail right on the head. Uh, enforcement has been the big kind of vacuum sitting out there. Um, I got into the middle at enforcement deal, not in the STR business, but seems like the same group that are handling the STR enforcement, we're also handling nuisance law enforcement stuff and codes and stuff like that in the valley. And I had a neighbor that uh was having a problem with a number of different nuisance issues and stuff like that. Built a big package, pictures, all that sort of stuff, contacted the office. And uh, so there's a wealth information, person in the office uh went out, contacted the neighbor and stuff like that, and contacted the neighbor and contacted the neighbor. I didn't even talk to the neighbor. Months went by, we keep talking back and forth. Then pretty soon, as you get down towards Christmas and I don't want to really give them a hard time because it's the holiday season. I said, well, that was, you started this four months ago. Um, and so I kept getting a little bit crankier and a little bit crankier and sure enough, that person went to another office and never seen another section in the enforcement part. And the boss, right there, gentleman, and I said, well, hey, I can help you out with that. And I said, great. Okay, here's what we got. Said, well, well, I'll look into it. And he did, congenial, both of them. I mean, congeniality awards across the office. But so, well, we sent it to the county attorney. Whoa, okay, now we're going to get some enforcement. Yeah, nothing happened. Called again about two weeks later. Well, they're doing something. The office there and they lost the package. So what about the attorney's dog? What do you mean attorney? The one that ate the homework. We're obviously getting a runaround here. All sorts of information provided. You've now got great contractors that are providing a great deal of information. But again, where the rubber meets the road is where that information gets turned into enforcement. I saw on one of the slides here, we're talking about enforcement teams. Many enforcement teams that we I I would bet you there are a lot of enforcement teams that's going to be working this thing. That was probably a typo. You've probably got a few people max. Just, just a guess. We've got a whole contracting agency providing information used for enforcement. But I don't see where enforcement rubber is meeting room.
Okay, thank you.
Howdy. Uh, my name is Kay Hoagland and I live in Eden. And I'm a full-time resident and a proud native of Ogden, Utah. Um, you know, I've been part of the group following this up in the valley. And we've had an opportunity to study what's going on elsewhere in Utah. What the proposed legislation was in the state legislature this past year and listening to what's going on in other communities. And it dawned on me, Weber County, in the valley in particular, have a gift that few other counties do in how to regulate STRs. That's a wise and provident bar scene zoning code that was adopted way before two thousand, as I understand it. I don't know when exactly the nightly rental then limitations were were created in that, but other counties don't have that advantage. We already have a leg up because we have zones where short-term rentals are, have been clearly allowed for many, many years and where where they're not allowed for many years. And so I would just, I view this effort now as a reinforcement of an existing discipline, an existing zoning approach to the valley that shows good land use planning, good protection for neighborhoods. I want to applaud the developers of these regulations for trying to see how we can better enhance that and ensure that plan is implemented through enforcement. You know, as as there are two cases I'd like to briefly address. One, I do think that for for Douglas Dixon, the Dixons, there should be some consideration after we let the dust settle, what I would call a homesteader exemption. For seniors who've been here a long time, have shown, you know, their responsible owners to see if there is some way, limited way, they might be able to do an STR where their property doesn't fully become all the time an STR. But seniors can recoup some money necessary to pay these escalating costs. So I think that should be on the agenda, look for some unique exceptions. Um, the other young couple they've left, but another example where it could work is the owner occupied where the owner is on premises. And that's a limitation that's that sometimes happens in other codes. But finally, I think we're getting to the number of the issue where we have non-residents outside investors who see this as a pot of gold and take property. And yeah, they may come visit with their family once in a while. But it's being actively promoted as business, conference center, wedding location with, um, I saw one picture on one listing, looked like it had fifty or more chairs set up, multiple weddings being staged. And that was not the intent um in this particular residential community. So I'm glad that is also the kind of of place that these um regulations will be able to address. So thank you all for your work and um um, keep up the good work. Take care.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, just a couple of things. What Kay just suggested is something that needs to be considered. Because what is happening, short-term rentals are being granted to developers and they make big bucks. On units that they sell that are allowed to do short-term rentals and it's raised. The value of real estate. In the valley and we do know people have left. Our school populations have been declining and we have a brand-new elementary school. That's number one. Number two. At a previous meeting a couple of months ago, Sean Wilkerson was here and someone asked the question, how long? Has this uh, zone? Um, definition been in place where you define zones that are allowed to provide short-term rentals? Sean started to work for the county, I believe he said in two thousand and five. He says, and he knows that it has been in place several years before he even joined. So there's no excuse. There are reasons why we have land use codes, zones defined. The Ogden Valley General Plan. Did look at those when we projected how we wanted the valley to be built out. We haven't ignored those. And I think we need to stick to it. And it's no excuse for a realtor. And I will tell you this. I will not mention who the short-term rental team is in the valley. But we would go up to homes where we know short-term rentals were occurring and we'd say, hi, are you the new neighbors? Are you the ones that just bought the new home? Oh no, we're only here short-term renting for a long weekend. Knowing darn well, it was in a neighborhood where short-term rentals weren't allowed. So people have found very creative ways to get around it. And it's only destroying our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep it under two minutes.
You got it. Um, I just wanted to uh. Make note that I've, I put several security cameras around my property. Because these enforcement teams or uh, maybe this woman herself, but I've got several uh, documented things. Where people are coming on to my property. They wandered around even in the backyard and are violating all sorts of um. Trespass laws. And um, I'm making note of those that are trespassing and I've got license plates, vehicles. And anybody that's gonna violate these and just think that they're above everything and they could persecute everybody else, even though we own our property. And uh, I'm, I'm seeking other means to go about that because it's, it's unacceptable. You're not allowed to walk on people's property. You're not allowed to go around the backyard. You're not allowed to. Walk thirty feet up and leave all these things. So I just know, if you're gonna come on my property.
Thank you.
We've got you covered.
Thank, thank you. Okay. 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 Alright. Well. Any other? Comments?
Maybe Iris, you clarify something. I heard a couple of people. Mention um. A perceived limit of number of people on their property, just their own guests, not paying. Not rental, just people you have that friends or family staying at your own house. Is there any sort of limit?
No, we don't go after people like that at all.
But there is no.
No, if you, if, if you have your family over because you're having a family retreat and it's your family. You're not charging them to stay there. Then that's, that's between you and your family and we would never, ever. Ever um, go after that. And so, yeah, and the other thing I wanted to say is Granicus, we are setting up. With bank accounts and things of Granicus will be getting the um, fines. And they will be going off to the fines for us.
So now that we know the baseline numbers. Who are folks who are complying with three hundred and eight or whatever the number is who weren't. Are there objectives, numeric objectives to get this to a satisfactory? Granicus given you guidance, how that typically flows in their experience and. Then the county, is there? Outlook as to when it might be below a hundred or whatever the number may be.
There are always, um. There are always people that need some education. As to what they can and cannot do with their property. That's. Is a given and it's always going to be that way. And there are always people that don't realize that they're in a particular zone or they're not in a particular zone. And that goes for any kind of thing. And so, um, there will always be a need there. And will we ever get a hundred percent? No. Will we ever get ninety-five percent? That's our goal. That's our goal. Um. And with the limitations of people that can come to your home, the one gentleman. And it's a team effort where what I mean by team. It will be the fire department, it will be the utility company, it will be the planning division, it will be inspections. We all have a say in whether this S T R can have more than ten. And the reasons they can or the reasons they can't. And maybe there's going to be a condominium that only has two bedrooms and they can't have ten people. Because it'd be overcrowded. Then we'll notify them and on their S T R license, it will say how many they can have. So.
And then just last but clarification. There is a way, if somebody lives on a property. A hundred percent of the time, they can. Go through the process to obtain a permit.
In certain zones, in certain zones, they can do what's called as a bed and breakfast. And, and it does need to be in their home. And, and yes, they can get a conditional use permit and a business license and they can do. And have, I have guests come over for the weekend for a few days, for a day. So.
Okay. Iris, real quick.
Yes.
I heard a comment that we've been working on this for years and we got thirty to come into compliance.
No.
How long have we been working on this?
We've been, we've actually been trying to set up with Granicus since um, January is when um. The um, uh, county commissioners. And all said yes to, to this. And so we've been working with Granicus. To get this done. So we've been doing it since about. And the tenth of January, which is when the commission and. Did this, approved the contract. And so, and with the contracts being approved, then on their side, they've had to build. The program that we want. And so that's taken a bit of time to get the proper, proper banking and that sort of thing. For fines and different stuff like that, that's taken some time. And so that's why. It's taken as long as it's taken so far. So we've been actively doing it. Since um, the tenth of January.
Thank you.
Iris, one quick question.
Sure.
So the zones where bed and breakfast could be allowed. Are they exactly the zones where S T Rs are allowed? Or there are, are there zones where bed and breakfast could be allowed? Or S T Rs are not allowed?
Yes, there are zones that bed and breakfast can be allowed where S T Rs are not allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Well. Um, any comments from? Legal? None from me. Thank you.
Nothing.
Comments from the planning commissioners?
Yeah, I think um. I mean, there, there's always a concern. Where. And if I use the term vigilante, it's not meant to offend. But I think there was a time. If you. Well, we're, we're aware. There was not enforcement by the county. Until. Recently, when we got the ordinance in place. On these S T Rs. There, there. Iris, there was enforcement. But we didn't have Granicus. We didn't have the new S T R ordinance. And. Yes. Yes. So. There was a period of time where some neighborhoods. The residents there were quite frustrated because. There were S T R impacts going on in their neighborhoods that seemed not to be addressed. And so they would go out and gather data. And, and that's kind of self-help. I think it's hopeful. That with these new tools that you have, there won't be a need for that. And. It, it appears that certainly it's not appropriate for. Neighbors to go on other neighbors' property and. Some of the things we've heard described tonight. And, and hopefully. These tools will make it unnecessary. For people to feel they need to do that.
Charlie, um, this is legal too, but how far does the county? I know the county encourages, um, if you see something, say something. How far do we? Encourage them to go? Do we encourage them to take pictures, turn it in and build a packet?
Occasionally, if we need, if we need evidence, um, but. Definitely not off the public driveway. Uh, no one's got the right to trespass.
Okay.
I did want to make mention, while we've got other ears, um, who. Can take note of this. There is a provision in the ordinance that says if you are willfully using the ordinance to harass your neighbor. Um, that you can uh, be fined or uh, taken through a, a penalty process yourselves. So that is something to pay attention to. When we say harass your neighbor, if it's not. A lawful or if it's not a lawful, unlawful thing as determined by our enforcement officers. We can't keep calling uh, the hotline to uh, complain. If no one allows complaints for that reason.
Now, there's some concern there because there's no reason for the county to be telling. The people that are, have, that have concerns that who it is. That's not really fair either. So there needs to be some level of anonymity.
For most complaints, there are. Um, this one's been a hot button enough issue that we have seen. Uh. Neighbors pit against neighbors in ways that um. Happen a little more frequently in anonymous situations, uh. When, when there's a little more skin in the game because a name is in the game. Um. It's a, it's a little bit uh. What's the word I'm looking for? There's a little more ownership. On behalf of the complainant.
Is that due to ordinance or just something that we've started to do?
Uh, we have an ordinance specifically in our S T R ordinance.
That says you have to complain, you have to put out a name and you have to publicly announce it?
Uh, it doesn't have to go on a website or anything like that, but it, it is subject to grandma. So if somebody were to uh, request. Uh, complainants of this specific ordinance, then they could get it.
Which, and that's, that's an ordinance that says that any complaint or just of S T R.
Just S T R.
And is that part of the new ordinance or is that?
Our ordinance.
Hey, um, I, I guess there's one thing I'd like to make comment of while we have some of the public here. Um, we, as a planning commission, have been discussing the need for uh, renewal of the, or revisitation of the Ogden temple. The Ogden Valley General Plan. Updating, updating. And uh, it has been seven years. And uh. And we would encourage, we encourage the public to uh, consider that as something. To think about whether that needs to be revisited and maybe. Um, if you feel it's like you should do so to. Express opinions and make that uh. Make that known. If that's something that we feel should be done. Alright. Okay, with that, we'll adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Thank, thanks, especially Iris. Thank you. And Bill.